...will be led by Ava Tussler. Ava?
I am the president of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the Lord's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose cross stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, and the rivers we watched were some gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the concert's dim glare, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, everybody. These students are from Newtown Elementary School. This is the Newtown Sound, and we have been celebrating a fantastic season. We're excited to share with you tonight Psalm 16:21, "We Are One," which the children shared about two weeks ago at a pyramid concert. And they will be joining with about 1,000 other kids from across the Philadelphia metro region and many other county road schools on Tuesday to sing at the American Young Voices Concert. So we wish them well and thank you all for your support. This is 16:21.
We all laugh, we all cry, we all cheer for fame, we all feel safe. We are one, we are free, we are free, we are free. We are one world, one people, and we all breathe the same. A tribe of many languages, a group of many parties, vying from east to west of the land. Heiya, heiya, 16:21. Heiya, 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 16:21. Heiya, 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 16:21. Heiya, 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 16:21. We are one. We all watch, we all need, we all seek fashion, we all seek joy. We all pray, we all choose, we all score, we all sell, we all pay, we all learn to cry. We are one world, one people, and we all breathe the same. In the darkness of the night, against the glory of the morning, we walk the long path of hard glory. Heiya, heiya, 16:21. Heiya, 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 16:21. Heiya, 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 16:21. Now we stand here together and lift our hearts in song to the rhythm of this morning delight. Heiya, heiya, 16:21.
Newtown Sound, wow. That was amazing. Absolutely amazing. Thank you all so much. I loved the song, loved the message, and your singing was even better. Thank you, thank you.
Have a roll call, please.
Ed Tate. Ed Tate.
Present.
Mike Dorar.
Present.
Denise Brooks.
Here.
Marian McKee.
Here.
Joseph Hidalgo.
Present.
Crystal Marcel.
She is traveling on business. We may or may not see her tonight depending on the weather.
Ed Salmon.
Here.
Andy Block.
I'm here.
Mark Byler.
Here.
Ed Tate.
What is that up front?
Still present.
Still.
Oh, oh, yeah.
You want to run again?
Still here.
Still here. All right. Tonight, we've got Mr. Greasebaum and Council Rock North Student Advisory Board. I told you I wasn't going to be here this time, but we moved the meeting, so I flew in from California 9:00 AM this morning just to see your performance.
So thank you for having us tonight. Tonight's presentation will be Katie Daniels representing the 9th grade, Bernie Paliam representing 10th, Veda Alum 11th, and Jake Cohen for his final time representing the class of 2019.
Good evening. I can't believe how quickly this year has gone past because it feels like just yesterday I was writing my first speech and today I'm delivering my last freshman year. Today, as per usual, I'm going to be talking a bit about the freshman class, athletics department, and music. So first, I'm just going to speak a little bit about my class. The freshman class officers have continued its work with designing water bottle stickers for the International Rhino Foundation. We are currently preparing for our student government elections tomorrow for our upcoming sophomore year. As far as athletics go, we just wrapped up the spring season. Boys track and field finished 5-1 and 2nd in the conference. The 4x100 and 4x800 athletics qualified for the District 1 Championships, and Jeremy Smithline in the 100 and 200, and Sean Clancy in the 110-meter high hurdles, and Jake Boden 800 also qualified. Boys lacrosse finished 10-6 during the season. Luke Walstrom was voted most valuable player in the Patriot League by the Patriot League coaches. Three players are going on to play collegiate lacrosse: Junior Peter Lehman, Senior Beckett Thompson, and Senior Robbie Kay. The girls' track team, lacrosse team, as well as the boys tennis team had an excellent season. I am personally looking forward to the beginning of summer workouts at the field hockey team as we all prepare for the upcoming fall season. Music has been quite busy since I spoke with you last. All the music groups held pyramid concerts with the schools from the north side of the district. The band in North Voice also helped with the Memorial Day Assembly as the band presented the colors and played echo taps while North Voice sang patriotic anthems. Lastly, we held the Acapella at the Rock directed by Mr. Williams as another concert to demonstrate the wonderful musical talent at North. So that's what has occurred in the freshman class, athletics department, and music department. I look forward to speaking with you again as a sophomore.
Good evening. My name is Bernie Paliam, and I'm the 10th grade representative of Council Rock North Student Advisory Board. Even though it seems as if we had just started speaking about Council Rock North's bustling start of the school year activities, only around 20 days of the 2018-2019 school year remain, and I am pleased to report that we are finishing the year with extracurricular clubs continuing to initiate positive and impactful activities for the students and the community. The officers of the class of 2021 are already hard at work, planning the homecoming dance for this upcoming fall. Regarding the upcoming start of the next year, the Fall Festival is bound to be an exciting time for all of Council Rock North students as clubs will set up food stands and plan activities for all attending. Additionally, Council Rock North's sock and buskin wrapped up their excellent performances of Monty Python's Spamalot on May 2, 3, and 4. The club has finished hosting a one-act submission contest and will perform a student-written play this June. With regard to other extracurricular activities, our Future Business Leaders of America program, also known as FBLA, had many students qualify for Nationals in order to further compete in San Antonio, Texas in a month. Council Rock North's debate team has also had very high levels of success recently in which three students competed in the National Catholic Forensic League Tournament. Two will also be competing on June 16 through 21st in the National Speech and Debate Association's Tournament. Additionally, Council Rock North has also done an effective job of spreading awareness about suicide prevention with the Health Activism Club recently hosting a 5K run. In order to further promote diversity within our school, students, parents, and teachers have met and planned to conduct a survey in the 2019-2020 year of all students in order to ensure that everyone feels safe, valued, and heard. Overall, the extracurricular activities at Council Rock North have had a very positive impact on the school and will continue to beneficially shape the educational experiences of students in the CRN community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Veda Alum, and I'm the class of 2020 representative. Today, I will be talking to you about the junior class and academics. Our class officers have already started planning a different format for the annual Fall Festival, which will take place in October. The Fall Festival this year will be shifting to a craft fair where local vendors and event potential entertainment will be present. CRN clubs and activities would advertise at the fair for the whole community to see. This is a great way for the community to interact with our students and clubs at North. The junior prom was on April 26 at the Princeton Hyatt. Our theme this year was "Starry Night." The event was very successful as we had approximately 400 people attend. The juniors all had a good time and cannot wait for our senior prom next year. Speaking of senior year, our class elections for the next school year took place this morning. We had both our current officers run for reelection and newcomers run for positions. We will find out the results of the election on Monday. Our entire class is very excited to end our high school career, our high school experience in the best way possible. These elections are the first step in doing that. Now on to academics. CRN held the universally dreaded annual AP exams during the first two weeks of May. Students and teachers have been working very hard since the beginning of the year to do well on these tests. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors took various exams to determine how much knowledge they have retained throughout the year and hopefully acquire college credit. Similarly, the school recently held the annual Keystone Exams for students to also test all the information that they have learned in three subjects: Algebra I, Biology, and Literature. The Keystone's are a great way for both students and teachers to see the areas that are strong while also allowing teachers to see the areas that need improvement. For the first time ever, Anish Matsees, a 10th grader, has earned the honor of being the best in Pennsylvania on the Centerport Microsoft Office Specialist Exam in Word 2016. The award is given to the highest performing high school or college student in the Microsoft Office Specialist Certification Challenge. This year, CRN is proud to announce that Margaret Zhang is a semifinalist in the prestigious Presidential Scholars Competition. This is truly a testament to the great learning environment that our teachers and the rest of the staff provide us with. As Jake will mention, recently, SEB held its annual elections. I'm very proud to say that I will be serving as the president of the Student Executive Board for the 2019-2020 school year. However, that unfortunately means I will have to resign my SAB position. I am very honored to have been given this opportunity for the past three years. I would like to thank Mrs. McCarthy and Mr. Greasebaum for giving me this opportunity which changed my high school career for the better. I would also like to thank all of you for allowing me to report on the activities of my class and the various parts of North that make the school what it is. It has been such a great honor to be able to represent my class like this every other month for the past three years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm feeling a lot of emotions being back here for the last school meeting of my life in high school. Nevertheless, I still have a lot to discuss with respect to my senior class and the Council Rock North Student Executive Board, so let's begin. First of all, the Student Executive Board has done and is currently still doing a lot in these past two months. About a week after we met last, we had our 12th Annual Charity Dance, Rock-a-Thon, on March 29. Over 300 students attended and raised around 14,000 for the very well-known locally Autism Care Foundation. In addition, just last Friday, on May 24, the Student Executive Board helped take part in our school's annual Memorial Day Ceremony. SAB freshmen did an amazing job getting carnations and roses for the attendees. But made this year's ceremony different from past ones, however, was that an actual classmate of the fallen Council Rock alumni came on stage during the ceremony and discussed each individual based on his past experiences with them. It was a very personable, heartwarming moment for all those who attended, and SEB is proud to have taken part in such a meaningful ceremony in our community. Currently, and by currently, I mean literally right now, SEB is running its annual man pageant, Mr. CRN. This year's theme is Men of the Millennium, and presently, 12 seniors are competing for the crown as prominent male figures in history. The curtains just opened for the event at 7:00 PM, hence why we're all here dressed in our behind-the-scenes SEB attire. This year, instead of donating our proceeds to the desired charity of the winning senior, all of our proceeds are going to Kyle Gray, a freshman at Council Rock North who is currently battling cancer. We've already raised over $2,000, actually, I think $3,000, just to update that, and expect to raise much more once tonight comes to a close. Last but not least in SEB news, SEB held its officer elections, we can go from today, for the 2019-2020 school year. The results have been in, and I'm very proud to announce the new board. Veda Alum Ashita said is president, Julia Walton is vice president, Yizan Baruki is public relations, Mary Benowitz is secretary, and Kylie McGrath is treasurer. I may not be here next year to see each of these individuals doing their jobs, but I have no doubt in my mind that they're going to all excel in what they do. Now on to senior news. On May 18, we had our senior prom from 7 to 11 at the Crystal Tea Room in the Wine Maker Building in Philadelphia. Given that this was the day after AP exam season came to the close, prom was a very nice welcome for all of us to unwind after being hard at work for so long. As of today, there's only 18 days till we graduate and six more real days of school until we're officially out of high school. After our traditional school days are over, we have live graduation and end-of-year activities, including a senior barbecue on June 12 at 3:00 PM and invitational senior recognition night on June 13 at 7:00 PM. At graduation, Josefina Echeverria, class president, will be speaking, and two others, Josie Lee and Tara McWigan, who have been selected after competitive graduation speech tryouts to give speeches as well. Looks like that's all there is for me to cover. Unlike our past seniors, I do not have a song to sing or cupcakes to hand out to you all, but I do want to say a few words of gratitude. Being your class of 2019 SEB representative has been a massive honor for me these past four years. I may still tremble with anxiety every time I speak here, but having that opportunity to speak face-to-face for their school board is something that I would not trade for anything else in my high school career. I started SAB and SEB as a shy, secluded freshman, afraid to take risks and afraid to be myself. Without these opportunities, I know for a fact that I would not be the outgoing and confident person I am today. So thank you all for giving me this opportunity and helping me to be myself. I'll carry all I have learned here into everything I do in the future, whatever that may bring. Thank you.
Fun to watch you the last four. I remember when you came in the first time. You can take it with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I take this and not that.
Veda, you can take yours too, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that allowed? Yeah? Yeah? Congratulations to both of you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Great job, North.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greasebaum. Yeah, maybe next week. With that, Dr. Fraser Superintendent, report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Good evening, members of the board and members of our CRN community. I will first note that prior to this meeting, we had a wonderful celebration of this year's retirees, and we happen to have this year retirees from all three of our core groups: our support staff, our teaching staff, and our administrative staff. So not everyone who attended our reception was able to stay for the meeting, but some have, and if you have, first of all, thank you, and second of all, I'm going to ask you to come on down and stand up here in the center, please. Stay there, stay there, stay there, especially you, Desco.
Hi, Barry. Just to be clear, Barry's got one more meeting.
That's right. So certainly not just this group, but our entire class of 2019 retirees very impressively represent 769 years of Council Rock experience. And I would add 769 years of wisdom that we will miss. We are forever grateful for all of you. The impact that you have had is simply immeasurable. So kudos to you. You deserve these accolades. You deserve the standing ovation, and you deserve many, many, many wonderful years to come. Thank you. Again, congratulations. Now, another very special presentation, and that is to honor our Special Olympians. So with that, I am going to introduce and welcome to the podium Council Rock South teacher, Ms. Wendy Lousch. Hi, how are you?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Wendy Lousch, and I'm a special education teacher at Council Rock High School South. I have the honor, as do many of the district and in the audience tonight, to help prepare our students for the Bucks County Special Olympics Track and Field Event that's held each spring at Council Rock North's Walt Snyder Stadium. Special Olympics was started almost 50 years ago by Eunice Kennedy Shriver as a day camp for children with intellectual disabilities. The organization now provides year-round training and competitions in a variety of sports to over 5 million athletes worldwide. This year, Council Rock School District had close to 100 student volunteers, multiple coaches from classroom teachers, PE teachers, physical therapists, support staff, and all of them would help to get our students prepared. And I'd like to send a thank you out to all of them that worked behind the scenes to make a day successful for our students. We had stands full of families, community members stopped by to offer support, and that provided a backdrop of cheers and motivation for our athletes. So thank you to all of you that came out that day. A creed is a set of beliefs or aims which guide someone's actions. Special Olympics has a creed that's set by all the athletes at the start of the event. Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt. This motto is used to encourage athletes to participate despite whatever challenges they may face. Council Rock School District had eight schools participate, as well as some of our graduates returned to compete with our team. Across all levels, we had 59 athletes who, despite their challenges, came out ready to bring home gold, silver, and bronze medals in running, javelin, softball tennis ball toss, standing and running long jumps. Their hard work, dedication, and infectious smiles that day makes the event great. It's with honor that I would like to recognize all of our athletes that were able to come here tonight, as well as those that are at home watching on TV. So when I say your name, if you can step forward. Loriann?
Oh.
Up. Aiden Madison? Jace McDonald? Tori Seda? Austin Hidalgo? Ben Fenley? Parker Ferguson? Megan Mahoney? And Megan Skinnell? Our 2019 athletes? Stay up there for some pictures. All right, everybody. Great job with smiles. Here we go, our big smile action. All right, anybody else want to take a group shot? Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Exciting stuff. Congratulations again to all of them. Now, normally, at the May board meeting, we also recognize our four police departments as part of Law Enforcement Week. As many of you know, this year, we've actually been meeting with all four police departments as well as the fire departments on a monthly basis. So we actually had that whole crew here this morning. That coupled with the fact that they've had a very busy week, we ended up doing that recognition this morning. Now, I just want to say that the partnership that we have with our police departments, I'm telling you, is second to none. It has been absolutely fantastic this year, sitting down one Thursday a month for at least an hour, sometimes an hour and a half. The chiefs are all there, other officers are there. What we typically have is a group of about 30 or so, which is really, really terrific to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I'd like to congratulate you all for this. So I'd like to congratulate Mr. Taylor for his leadership in that arena, Bill Rick, Mr. Bill Rick, for his leadership in that arena as well. I do want to quickly recognize our chiefs. Chief Sabbath from Newtown Borough, Chief Hearn from Newtown Township, Chief Clark from Northampton Township, and Chief Schmidt from Upper Makefield Township. And of course, our school resource officers from Council Rock High School North, Officer Renee Hurst, and from Council Rock High School South, Mr. Jim Caldwell. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all of them. A few key upcoming dates. First and foremost, high school graduation. I know some folks are anxious, excited, and the good news is, this year, we fixed that date. So Monday, June 17th, it has been, Monday, June 17th, it shall be. Four o'clock at North, six o'clock at South, and then the last day of the school year for K through 11 will be that Thursday, June 20th. That will be an early dismissal day all across the district, and at the elementary level, AM kindergarten will attend, PM kindergarten will not. A couple other key dates, District Art Show. I had a chance to get over there earlier today. Mr. Balik, I think you did as well. Ms. McKeeg, fantastic. I know a couple other folks, board members, are planning on going tomorrow. It is awesome. It is absolutely fantastic. We route students from all 10 of our elementary schools there throughout the course of the day today and tomorrow, but in the evening time, it's open to the public tomorrow from 5:00 to 8:00, and then on Saturday from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. If you have a chance to get there, please do. Council Rock North Gymnasium, all the information's on the website. Incredible, incredible talent from our student artists. Elementary Media Festival coming up this coming Tuesday. It's hard to believe that June 4th is this Tuesday, but indeed it is. And our annual district's theme night is actually taking place right now. So any of those events, all of those events, go to our website and learn all about them and how you can attend or otherwise participate. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the fact that we recently were awarded something quite special. In fact, we were the only school district in Pennsylvania to do so, and that is distinction by the National Council of Teacher Quality as a great district for great teachers. It's a wonderful badge of honor for us. It speaks well, I think, of everyone in this entire school district, all school employees. It speaks well certainly for our Board of School Directors because policy review was a big part of this process, and just our culture, who we are in C.R., who we are in Council Rock. It's a great place to be, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to live, to raise your children, all of the above, and especially the time when our state and our local region is facing a teacher shortage, this is a great thing for us to be awarded at this particular time. So again, the only, the only school district in the state to be awarded that, and that information is also on our website, and super proud of earning that distinction. And lastly, from me, on tonight's agenda, of course, we have a recommendation, a motion to approve the 2019-2020 budget. You will see that that budget requests a 2.18% tax increase, and I just want to give you a sense of what this budget includes. First and foremost, it includes safety and security enhancements at all 14 of our schools. It maintains all current programming, so thankfully, no reductions. It brings on board a brand-new K-5 math program. In fact, that math program itself is up for approval this evening. Year three of the technology plan, we've done elementary this year, focus on middle school, next year, we extend to the high school level. To put this in perspective, we will be providing 1,835 Chromebooks between the two high schools next year. That's just about double the current number of devices that we have at the high school level. The current number is 970. And of course, we're adding our two technology integration specialists at the high school as well. Learning Management System is coming onboard. Canvas is going to be that tool. It's going to be fantastic for teachers, students, parents, one-stop shopping, one place to go, an easy way for our students to be organized, and parents as well. So really excited about that. Students will have accounts, grade seven through 12. Elementary teachers will have accounts, but the students will have to wait until they get up there into middle school. And lastly, but certainly not least, we are adding a new English course. It's going to be a multicultural literature class, and we are very excited about that. So there's lots more in the budget than that, but those are some highlights to give you a sense of what our educational priorities and safety priorities are with this budget as we head into the 2019-20 school year. I think that does it for me. Thanks, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier, and on behalf of the board, special congratulations on that award to you and the entire staff. It's really great to watch you guys do that. Really, not a whole lot to do around this table, just what you guys do every day and have done for a long, long time. So collectively, thank you.
Well, thanks, and I would be remiss if I didn't in particular mention Ms. Christine Taylor, Director of Human Resources, who has been instrumental, obviously, in all of this work, but specifically through this process. So Christine, thank you.
Mr. Cox, listeners, report, please.
Just let me announce the executive sessions, Mr. Black, on May 2nd, on personnel, and on May 21st with respect to collective bargaining. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. All right, we're going to move to public comment. We've got a full house tonight. We've also got a very full agenda. So consistent with past practice, we're going to go, we've got two sessions of public comment. We're going to go for about 30, 45 minutes. In the first session, I would ask that you please hold to three minutes in respect of others. Try not to be too repetitive. I know there's multiple folks who probably want to talk about things, especially in the first round, if you could hold to the agenda so we could get to the agenda, that would be great. We will hear everybody that has something that they want to say this evening. Some of it might be in the, in the second session there. So I've got five names here, and then if there's anybody else that has anything to say, I'd ask you to line up behind those five after they come on. I'll raise my hand just before three minutes. There should be a timer up there, too. And with that being said, I would ask for Mr. Mark Dolan. And when you come up, just state your name and community, please.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Dear members of the Council Rock School Board of Directors, my administrative, teaching, and support staff colleagues and residents of our school community, I'm Mark Dolan, the music teacher and choir director at Newtown Middle School. I'm proud and grateful to have taught some 8,000 students since my arrival in 2001. I also proudly serve my association, CREA, as the middle-level vice president, and what I'm going to speak to tonight is on behalf of our association. In the early 1970s, the landscape of education was so vastly different than it is today. I marvel at the advances made in special education, both legal and pragmatic. I marvel at the staffing that allows us to reach all learners regardless of the physical, emotional, and intellectual gifts brought to the plate. I'm secretly jealous my older brother Robbie did not grow up in a day and age, for his life in New Jersey was very limited, most especially with regard to public education and the special education services of the time. My parents constantly heard the words, "We just can't provide for him. There must be other placements around the state of New Jersey you could examine. Perhaps a social worker can help you." And my personal favorite, "I wish there was more we could do." Today, there are incredible things happening around our country in education, but perhaps best right here in Council Rock. Our autistic support program is second to none. Our evolving emotional support program is now reaching even younger children. Our life skills programs, where my brother would have been resided, are dynamic and exciting. Our regular education and gifted programs also provide a depth that draws people to move to Council Rock, and you hardly ever see a real estate advertisement that doesn't begin with the words, "In the revered Council Rock School District." Recently, and again this evening, Robert Frazier announced our district was nationally recognized as a great district for great teachers by the National Council on Teacher Quality. This honor requires teamwork, a team effort on the part of our teachers, administration, and our support staff. I continue to be proud of my colleagues and Council Rock for this and our many other recognitions. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that we teachers cannot do for kids at the level we do for kids without our tremendously talented support staff on hand. Our well-qualified and experienced teacher assistants are the backbone of our special education programs. Our 21st-century facilities would not serve us if it weren't for our maintenance crews. Our administrative duties, including the countless writing of IEPs, would not be properly completed without our secretarial staff. Our Crespa brothers and sisters are the ones who walk on our roofs to change air filters. Crespa folks staff our summer programs. Crespa folks are the ones who help us with IEPs, manage small group testing, and even change adult diapers for students who cannot toilet themselves. Our Crespa brothers and sisters deserve a good and fair contract, and they deserve it today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. I've got Noel and Dominique next. If you could please get your last names and the towns you're from.
Good evening. I'm Dominique Lepore, and this is Noah Hallam, and we are here to talk about how the planned initiative is flawed. Council Rock School District needs to adapt a one-to-one initiative by providing Chromebooks to all students in high school. In the 21st century, technology is vital and necessary to learning. Although recorded in 2012, 55% of K through 12 teachers have complained about the lack of technology resources in classroom. Council Rock School District is the only district in Bucks County to not provide a one-to-one ratio of students to Chromebooks. Right now, our ratio is one Chromebook for every two students. Multiple problems arise with this statistic. Due to the two students having to share a Chromebook, the spread of illnesses can increase. Class time can be taken away, and the opportunity to take the Chromebook home is eliminated. Lately, many people at Council Rock North and South have been getting sick left and right. This may not be, this may be prevented by sharing of these devices. Germs can be spread very easily and latch onto Chromebooks, which is touched by more than one student during, because of the uneven ratio. Unlike a desk or a chair, Chromebooks are not a device that is easily disinfected. How would you like an individual to hold your phone for an hour before you use it after they have touched unless contaminated objects?
While continuing with the one-to-two ratio may sound like an efficient plan, it takes away a large amount of class time. The length of time it takes for a teacher to sign out a card of Chromebooks and walk to the pickup area before every class to grab them could have been used in order to begin a new lesson on the Chromebooks. By continuing this flawed plan, it is inefficient and problematic for teachers to leave class. This year, in our 11th-grade English class, we have learned a plethora of tools, useful websites, programs, ways to collaborate with classmates and teachers, and so many more useful advantages. The amount of new learning tools that we have picked up are extremely useful and provide study skills and learning techniques that will continue to help us through our high school and college careers. There has been discussion of the idea of building a new turf for Council Rock South, possibly building one at Council Rock North. The money that is being spent on the new turf at South, $2.7 million, could be used otherwise to buy over 10,000 Chromebooks, which provides access for every student in the Council Rock North School District. Of money, if money is problematic, rentals can be discussed instead of a full purchase. By building a new turf, it will only impact 2% of the school population, which inconveniences 98% of the leftover student body and does not provide an opportunity for improved technology in the classroom. This is denying equity for technological learning at home and lessens the level of preparation for college or further education. Not recognized often are the multiple students who cannot afford a computer or laptop at home. It is difficult for these students to finish work and complete homework and other studies online without the availability of a computer in their household. We have a flawed, a flawed plan for technology that is affecting the path of each student to become an empowered learner. We are ready for change. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Before you leave, I appreciate the solutions you offered, too. So, so, so thank you. We, we hear you. Next, we've got George Roof. Did I get that right?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is George Riloff. I'm a hall monitor at Council Rock High School. Why I'm here today with my brothers and sisters, Crespa, is we feel that the way negotiations are going, it's a take-it-or-leAVE-it situation. Now, let me lay it all out to you what we're all about. Crespa is the backbone of Council Rock with the teachers. Do we get great school district, great teachers, great support staff? Once those students are dropped off in the morning, it's our responsibility to have a positive attitude to take them through from grade school right through to high school. Their safety. When something happens, we handle it. You know yourself, you surround yourself with good people. And that's what you have here, these teacher assistants, the maintenance, the clerical. Without them, you wouldn't have these high grades. And here's one of the problems. We're off that contract, and I don't want to negotiate a contract here. I'm 100% behind the contract people who's trying to negotiate this contract. What you presented should have been presented in the first meeting, not the last meeting. We only have 30 days to get this contract done. All the co-pays are up. Some of the benefits are taken away from us. Doesn't make sense. 1.75 rates. You gotta be kidding me. It's nothing. So I'm asking you to think about us and what we do as a school and Crespa to help this school be number one. And also, too, I think the money we're spending could be spent different. What are we spending it on? Turf, I heard. It's the first time I heard it. Let me tell you something. We had the Alice Program. Because whenever we have an active shooter problem, who's going to handle it? Us. You're here. We don't even have a go bucket. We don't even have a go bucket. And we went through, we all had pieces of paper, but we don't have the bucket, and the bucket has rope in it, it has tie wraps in it, has batteries in it, has flashlights in it, has water in it. What are we going to do? So here's what I think it's a good idea, and I don't want to take too much of your time. I think it would be a good idea that some of the board members come to some of these schools and watch what this personnel does. And see if they ain't worth more than what you're offering. Now, it isn't us against them. We've got some time. It's horse freight, and you know that. But give us something, at least a living wage. Thank you for talking.
Thank you. Next, I have Cindy Mon. Okay. Thank you, Cindy. Chance Caveres.
Hello, everyone. My name's Chance Caveres. I'm an alumni of Council Rock North, the class of 2018. Some of you might recognize me. I spoke before this board once before, a couple years ago, and I appreciate having the opportunity to come here and speak before you all again about something that's very important myself. I come before you this evening to discuss the situation in this district, which has come to my attention and which is dear to my heart. Since graduating from North last year, I've become a member of the U.S. Army Reserve Officers' Training Corps, Second Brigade, Ram Battalion, Company A. Joining ROTC is one of the, has been one of the best choices I've ever made and has granted me returns beyond any I could have imagined. I'm stronger, faster, smarter, and tougher than I was when I left for college. I've been given opportunities I could never have foreseen, and owe much of my success at Fordham University to the Army. I was therefore surprised and disheartened to learn more about the relationship between Council Rock North and the U.S. military. It is my belief, in light of my own observations and what I have been told, that North does little to aid the students who wish to join the military. Guidance counselors, in my experience, are unfamiliar with the processes for applying to the service academies, applying for ROTC scholarships, and enlisting. I received almost no help in my attempts to go to the Naval Academy or apply for ROTC as they were unaware of the processes in spite of having held the job for some time. My parents and I had to go it on our own, struggling but succeeding to pursue my dream of service. North's issues with the military are not helped by the fact that North is remiss in its obligation to the federal government to allow military recruiters a certain amount of access to the school at a student's time. Recruiters almost, from almost every branch, have lamented to me that North violates federal directives in keeping them from visiting the school more often to enforce students such as what the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Corps can offer them. I myself saw this as recruiters were given maybe two separate occasions to visit the school each year, and they were restricted to tables in the school each year, and they were restricted to tables in a front area where students hardly passed through. Adding another example I took note of in recalling my school's actions toward the military was preventing family from attending the Memorial Day ceremony, which honors all students entering the military. My parents and the parents of others entering the military in my class were not invited to the ceremony. This would have been an excellent chance for these parents to see the fruits of their late years of labor, found young men willing to give life and limb in defense of the United States. Thankfully, one of the parents of a future serviceman protested this year and righted this wrong, and these parents were able to go and appreciate their children's future service to the country. In the face of these circumstances, I begin to wonder if the sentiment exists that our students are too good for the military. Otherwise, why would the district do these things when there exist a number of students at North who would greatly benefit from a career or at least a stint in the armed forces? The U.S. military is one of the most diverse employers in the world. They care not what your race, religion, or sexuality is. They do not ask that you compromise your morals. In fact, the military provides extraordinary benefits to their members: health care, travel, camaraderie, the list goes on. I strongly believe that many of my peers would have done themselves better to join the military than to have been shuffled into a university that they were ill-prepared for or didn't belong in in the first place. It's a shame that North did not do more to push these storms toward these things. I worry that North is too concerned about following their students to colleges to aid their school rankings instead of focusing on providing their students with the path that benefits them the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Chance, please note, I would be more than happy to meet with you. So if you just shoot me an email or call my office or even see me at the end of this meeting, I'd love to get something set up. I do want to just note that the school has participated in meetings over the past year, past couple of years, on this very topic. I've actually been in those meetings, but it sounds like perhaps we still have progress to make. So I'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up, Chance. See you through. All right. I don't have anybody else on the list. If there's anybody else that would like to make public comment, please feel free to come up, state your name and where you're from. Okay, if there is no further comment, we'll move on to our agenda. I just want to make a quick comment relative to all the folks in the room on behalf of the board here. One, we value you as employees, and we appreciate the many contributions that everybody makes. And we hope that you understand we're also responsible to a much larger constituency of taxpayers. So in the process, we bargained through the same methodology and parameters we did last year with Creus successfully, and we would love to get back to the table with you in the very near future and get this thing done. Thanks for coming on. Okay, if I could ask for Mr. Solomon, a motion for the approval of minutes for the April 25, 2019 meeting, please.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Block. I move to approve the minutes of the April 25, 2019 Public School Board Meeting.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Thorward. Any questions or any objections? Hearing and hearing none, I'd ask the secretary to note that the motion passes with unanimous consent. We will take a quick minute while the room clears. All right, we're going to move on. We're going to go with our item for discussion tonight, the draft 2019-2020 meeting calendar. Dr. Frazier?
Thank you, Mr. Block. Board, that calendar, as well as the public, is available to you in board docs. We had brought a version to the board last month, and the change essentially in this version relative to the last one is that now, consistent with how we've been doing it, the third Thursday of the month will be the board business meeting, and the fourth Thursday of the month will be our new education committee meeting. So it's essentially keeping it the same way we're doing it now. We had proposed flip-flopping those, but we came across a couple obstacles in looking to do that and then wanting to make sure that we can have policy committee at such a time that we can later in that same month, not the following month, approve those policies. You'll note that some of the policy meetings have moved from one Monday to up a week or two weeks to allow that to happen. So if we have questions, happy to fill them, and this doesn't require a formal motion or vote. So if we feel like we're comfortable and good to go, we will proceed with it, and otherwise, we're still free to make changes.
I block off all my Thursdays, so you got it.
Even the fifth one in May.
Yeah.
The unexpected one.
Excellent. So with that, we'll move on to the, this is probably the last update from the Academic Standards Committee. Ms. McKee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Block. The Academic Standards Committee met on May 23rd. We had three agenda items. The first was a presentation on high school scheduling. In addition, there was a meeting of the High School Scheduling Committee on May 28, which I attended. We received an update, discussed further steps, asked questions about the status of the Scheduling Committee. There is an email address that is now open, highschool scheduling@crsd.org, where folks can weigh in on their thoughts and ideas about the proposed changes to the high school schedule. In addition, there will be a survey in fall to gather more feedback on the proposed schedule. And there will be a meeting in October that will be the new Education Committee. At the October Education Committee meeting, we'll have a further update on the scheduling with detailed results and some ideas about cost analysis and changes. Our second agenda item was a presentation on the new K-5 math program, which will be an agenda item coming up shortly. In this past school year, two math programs were piloted. The recommended program is called Bridges. We received a detailed presentation of what that program entails, the components. And most of us who are at the meeting, I think, were very pleased to see that it is a real process-driven program featuring multiple skills, with a great deal of rigor involved. That was an issue for us and one that we discussed, and our expectations for that. The higher-level questioning that's involved with that math program all resulted in that being the recommended program to be adopted, hopefully, tonight. Finally, we had a presentation on a new learning management system called Canvas, which will also be voting on tonight. Many pluses to adopting this system, which Dr. Frazier had already referenced tonight. That concludes my report about our meeting. I would now like to move consent agenda items B through O as contained in this agenda.
Second. Dr. Thorward, faster on the button. Are there any questions? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd like the secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent. And with that, Dr. Elliott, let's hear about the math program.
Thank you, Mr. Block. So as Ms. McKee noted, we brought to the board last week a new elementary math program that is for grades kindergarten through fifth grade, and this program is going to be really beneficial for our students. It is aligned to the rigor of the PA Core standards, and it engages our students in problem-solving, procedural fluency, or computational fluency, conceptual understanding, developing math language, and higher-level questioning. And I can say, from being in several classrooms to observe both pilot programs, but highlighting particularly the one that we're recommending to the board, the level of math language that our students were engaged in using and using effectively in conversations with their peers was incredible, even as young as our first graders. And the terms they were using correctly was just amazing, that they really are understanding and building that conceptual understanding of mathematics, which is so critically important. With the program included, with all the materials that teachers will receive, we will be also providing several opportunities for teacher training. Those include some workshops this summer that teachers are welcome to attend, as well as some training throughout the year next year at the elementary level, with a large majority of our district professional development days at the elementary level focused on providing support and training for our teachers as they work together to learn the ins and outs of this new program. Additionally, we will be providing some parent workshops to educate parents on the new program. We have some upcoming workshops in the next several weeks, and I'll give you those dates and times and locations here, and they will also be publicized and sent out through building principles at the elementary level as well. So our first parent workshop is on June 10 from 9:30 to 10:30 at Newtown Elementary School. Our second parent workshop is June 13 from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Holland Middle School in their auditorium. And the third workshop will be June 14 from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning at Churchville Elementary School. We will also then hold some additional parent workshops in the fall. Those dates are yet to be determined, and when we have those dates, we will be sure to announce those to our parents so that they have another opportunity to come out and learn more about our new Bridges Math Program. I'm really excited about it. I think it's going to be really great for our kids, and I'm really glad that we have the opportunity to present this to the board tonight for your approval.
Thanks, Sue.
Any questions or comments?
I think I got most of mine out of my system at Academic Standards, so.
I'll say. Since I had elementary students go through the current program and another pilot program that wasn't Bridges, and after reviewing the Bridges material and, you know, coupled with the reviews that you had from the professionals, I'm very happy with the program, and I see it firsthand what it was up against, and I believe it's a good program, and I really like the parent workshops that you're going to provide. I think that's key and a good move, so I just wanted to provide some support for it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aldago. Any other comments?
I agree. I just want to say that it was really great to have teachers demonstrated how lessons are conducted. It's, you know, math is math. You have to teach these skills, but it is very, very clear that this new program is a very creative way of teaching, different from what we've had, but so engaging, and it was really very special to see the enthusiasm of the teachers and the excitement that they see in bringing math to kids. And it really blew my mind to see a first-grade lesson talking about scaling triangles and different things that you wouldn't ordinarily expect to hear from, you know, five and six-year-olds. And so I want to thank all the teachers who volunteered to pilot, particularly the ones who piloted for a program that wasn't selected. It's such a tremendous amount of work to prepare for a new curriculum, so these teachers are going through two consecutive years of new programs, but the efforts are so important for us to make sure that we're getting the right program. I really have so much confidence that we are, so I just want to thank you for that.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just let me echo Mr. Aldago's comments. I have a first grader and a third grader went through both. Bridges in first grade and Visions was the other program, I believe.
The other pilot was called Ready?
Ready, that's it. The first grader speaks a different language. When she comes home, she got a test administered last week, came home with a three out of four. We went over the entire test, and she said, "Dad, you have no idea what I'm talking about." Although I did, I pulled it off pretty good, I thought, but I'm amazed. It's an awesome situation of a whole lot of things going on with a whole lot of sponges in first grade. Yeah, I applaud the work that was put into it. I think it's the right way for our kids, and, you know, the proof's in the pudding. The kids are learning, and they're learning at a high rate, and we should be proud of them. Congratulations.
Excellent. Did I ever call for a motion on that? I don't think I did. I got to do that before the next discussion. Ms. McKee, have a motion.
Thank you. I move to approve Bridges Mathematics as the new elementary math program for grades kindergarten through five for a total amount of $389,376.21, subject to audit.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Any further discussion? Hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to note that we have a new math program without any objections. And if you could read number, or letter Q, please.
Yes, please. I move to approve the Power School Customization Agreement as contained in this agenda. Mr. Senko, do you wish to speak to this?
I'll give you a second, first. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you. Sorry, jumped the gun on that. Just, this is in line with some of what you've heard Ms. McKee talk about, Dr. Frazier and Dr. Elliott. This agreement allows for Canvas program as well as e-school to talk back and forth from one to one another. There's pass-back information capabilities with this. And built into this agreement, there's a one-time fee that was reduced significantly, and it's important for us to kind of give a shout-out to Rick Cargus and his team downstairs. He worked nationally, with people nationally, to drive the price down. And with having said that, he reduced us by about $10,000 on that. So that really does allow us pass-back opportunity so that our teachers can have information both in e-school as well as Canvas.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Senko? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent, and if we could continue with letter R, please.
Thank you. I move to approve the reconfigurations of Rice Town Elementary School and Rolling Hills Elementary School as described in the letter of today's date from Dr. Frazier to the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education and as attached to this agenda and direct to the administration to obtain PDE's approval of the reconfigurations.
You second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thorward. Anything that we need to know that we don't already?
No.
Any questions? Any comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the secretary to note that that motion passes with unanimous consent, and if we could have letter S, please. Ms. McKee?
Thank you. I move to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar as attached to this agenda.
Second.
Mr. Tate.
Mr. Senko?
So last board meeting, we talked about, or several board meetings ago, you approved the 1920 school year calendar, and we were asked to go back out to the community to look at, surveying the community regarding the school year calendar 2020-2021, and we've done so. We have received somewhere in the neighborhood of 76 to 82 additional pieces of feedback since discussing the calendar at the last board meeting. And the calendar that is in front of you is the one that is representative of the Thursday, Friday, Monday spring break model. And a couple of important things to mention to you as we considered all the feedback that we received from the community. Out of the, all of the people who contributed to the survey, 45.76% of the people felt strongly that the school year should start after Labor Day, while 37.53% believed that the school year should start before Labor Day. The second piece of information from the survey that's important to share is that 36.06% of the people felt that spring break should be a full week, while 54.37% of the respondents felt that spring break should be shorter, the Thursday, Friday, Monday model that's in front of you. So with the work that we've done with the survey and the help of our community, it's the administration's recommendation to go with the school 2021-2020-2021 school year calendar with the shortened spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Senko. And let me just, before we get started with comment, thank you for your incredible responsiveness. I think you've set a new record for return emails in terms of numbers and speed, and the only thing that surprised me is that they weren't handwritten. So anybody that knows Mr. Senko will get that. Yeah, I guess that's true.
And it's probably worth pointing out that I think some of those replies were done on a camping trip, on a hunting trip, fishing trip, some trip. on a camping trip, on a hunting trip, fishing trip, some trip.
You've got to be careful.
Thanks, Charles, Mr. Sanco.
So, if I may just add one more thing, I just want, I don't think we could overstate this. It's important to know that the board has already approved the 2019-2020 school year calendar. What we're talking about here is two years out. So I know we had some questions about that with regard to the survey and the feedback we got, so next year we'll be consistent with the calendar that's been approved with the one-week spring break. Two years out is the three-day Thursday, Friday, Monday spring break.
Right, and that's the June graduation date. So again, what I really like about this is we're locking graduation date almost two years out. So I'll open up to, Denise wants to make comment.
Yeah, actually, I just had a question. How many people answered that survey?
Total number of respondents was, it was 2,747, original respondents.
That is a very significant number of responses. So for me, it really validates the data and tells me that we can make informed decisions on that, so a calendar that responds to that is great. I'll just say that, you know, when I joined the board six years ago, calendar issues were a big deal for me, having put two Phil children through the district, and there were some issues that were always burdensome for me as a mom. The roving graduation date, not being able to lock it in until April was a challenge because I had family members that I wanted to come to graduation, and we didn't know what the date was, and I had friends whose, you know, extended family could be flying in, so we know that airfare is a lot more expensive the closer you get to the date of your flying. So that we have established, setting graduation with a lot of notice is so considerate to our families and then helps us plan as well, so that's great. And another thing that was important to me, there's nothing in me that's a procrastinator. I always like looking out, setting the calendar, planning vacations, and I never understood why we had to go through this exercise every single year. Why not just set a few years of calendars, get it done? People know what it is, there's no questions. And granted, this year we strayed a little bit because we wanted to have this survey, so it delayed us from the ability to set two calendar years at once, but we're doing it now. And so I think this sets great precedent for planning, for being able to, you know, give information to our, our community about schools, you know, and the dates and planning. So I think this is great, and I want to commend you for the work, because I know that just administering a survey, analyzing the results, responding to community feedback is, is a big task. You handled it really well, and so I thank you for the efforts, and I think the calendar is a great piece of work.
Mr. Tate?
I think the responses from the community were really encouraging. The number of people that completed the surveys and the number of people that took the time to send us some really thoughtful, detailed emails with good questions and suggestions and comments. What particularly surprised me was the number of really positive emails that we got. I mean, it's natural for people who dislike something to write an email. I think it's less likely to get positive feedback, and we really did get some amazing emails. I was just looking at one right here from a mother who was saying, I sure wish we could put it into effect a year earlier, who really likes the calendar. So I think this was well done. I think gathering community feedback and input is a good idea. In the end, the board has to make the decision based on the recommendation of the administration, and it's a good thing that the community supported so, so heartily what, what we're doing, and I think this is a great step forward.
Thanks, Mr. Tate. Okay, I just have one comment. You know, with this calendar, you're going to get feedback on both sides, and I think the feedback in this case was significant. I think it's time to do something new. In particular, I like the fact that, you know, it really gives us a chance to get out of school a lot earlier in June and still deliver what we need to, and gives us the flexibility on snow days without having to push up against, against July. So unless there's any other comments or questions? Any objections? I would ask the secretary to note that this motion passes with unanimous consent, and we've got a graduation date for 2021.
June 8.
All right, we're going to go to the Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22 report. Ms. Brooks?
So, traffic and a late workday prevented me from fully participating tonight in the retiree reception. Very sad about that. However, I was able to participate in the reception for the retiring members of the IU last week. There were 36 of them, and it was a very special ceremony because obviously the staff of the IU have very challenging jobs and interesting perspectives on the students they serve, and it was a really heartwarming reception. At our meeting, we had an interesting situation where we had a two-minute interval where there was no leadership of the IU. We, as a board, renegotiated Dr. Hoffman's contract. His contract is very different than a school district would handle a superintendent, because there's stricter rules about IUs. So whereas a superintendent of a school district can have a three, four, or five-year contract, the IU is limited, it can only have a four-year contract. And the IU has the ability to renegotiate contracts at any time, start the dates whenever they like. So Dr. Hoffman is an extraordinary leader of the IU, and, you know, school boards change, you never know what's going on, and so the current board of the IU is so impressed with Dr. Hoffman and wants to ensure his security in his position. So it was the will of the board, even though he was only two years into his four-year contract, it was the will of the board to provide him with a new four-year contract now. And so the procedure was that we had to make a motion to accept his resignation, and then Rebecca Malamud, the assistant director, became like the leader of the district for like a minute, and then we approved a new contract for him, which now takes him through to 2023. It was a pretty easy negotiation because everything stayed the same from the previous contract, but it is, it is to the benefit of everyone in this county to have him as a leader for this service and this population. We talked about, we approved a preliminary budget for the IU. The IU budget is $176 million, and this budget represents a 7.8% increase over last year. If you factor out some capital improvements that are going on, it's a 5.2% increase. The budget of the IU is very different than a school district because it's not paid for with taxes, so, and it's actually not structured at all like our budget. The IU budget is actually 26 separate budgets for services, and it, school districts pay a portion for the services they use, but the amount that school districts pay is not the majority, it's something like 40-something percent that the school districts pay. The majority of the budget is funded through state and federal money and grants. So Council Rock, I guess it was in March, we approved our portion of programs and services, and that all comes together, so we'll be approving the final budget for the IU in June, but not contentious because it's all just a balance sheet of the money, the revenues that are coming in and the things that school districts are using. And then legislatively, we just discussed two joint letters from the Bucks County superintendents that were sent to Harrisburg. The board has received a copy of that, for anyone interested. Basically, it was in support of some charter school legislation that is going on. The thing that's interesting, one of the, one of the letters touches on House Bill 356 and 357, which is an interesting bill because the language as proposed would give charter schools, charter schools the right, the first refusal to purchase or lease a school building that's no longer in use. So for example, today, there are two buildings that are no longer used by the Nishamani School District and are leased to the IU. The Head Start program, which is for significantly needy students, is housed in Southampton. The Head Start is for zero to, well, three to five-year-olds, and then we have another program that the IU uses in a building in Levittown. So the, you know, the IU is always looking for services there. The Head Start program, we are only allowed to have something like 390 students in that program. We have 400 students on a waiting list for that, and it's because of the way the federal government structures these things. So if buildings were to become available in Bucks County, I'm sure this, the IU would seize opportunities to provide more services because we have children in our county that need those services. But this bill, as worded, if it were to pass, wouldn't even allow the IUs to compete for this space because it would give it directly to a charter school first. And so, you know, I applaud the districts, all the superintendents in Bucks County for participating in this, because it sends a really strong message to, to our state government that, you know, our county has needs, and the IU facilitating a way for all districts, not only on these legislative things, but obviously for everything, to bring, you know, 13 separate school districts together to provide services that are, you know, we're all in for the kids is a really special thing. So that was that. And unfortunately, for the first time in nine years, I will not be able to attend the Council Rock Media Festival this year because it coincides with the IU graduation on June 4th, so that's where I will be, and shout-out to the Media Festival, which is a great event.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Ms. Marcel is still in transit, so Mr. Solomon has graciously agreed to step in with the Council Rock Education Foundation report.
Two seconds. I did know there's a golf outing coming up in, in October, and it's a Thursday, not a Monday. You know, normally how golf outings are Mondays, this is a Thursday.
I'm ready now. Mrs. Marcel just landed, by the way, very safely. Two points of interest from our friends at Creve. Save the date, Council Rock Golf Classic is Thursday, October 3rd. You'll take place at the North Hampton Valley Country Club. Please join us. For our first-ever Council Rock Golf Classic proceeds go to fund the K-12 innovative steam projects for Council Rock students. Come out and enjoy a great day for a great cause, and it's on the councilrockeducationfoundation.org website for more information. Second point of interest is the Class of 2019 graduation flowers go on sale next week. Reserve yours today. Pick up at Council Rock South and North the night of graduation. This is a project, this project is supported by the Education Foundation and our chief students, as they will help distribute the bouquets that night to help build job and leadership skills. Please look for the announcement in this week's Council Rock news. And as I said, she landed safely.
She's watching on YouTube.
Hi.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Solomon. So with that, we're going to go to the middle Bucks Institute of Technology representative. Ms. McKee's going to cover that tonight.
Thank you. MBIT committees met on May 7th, and the Executive Council met on May 13th. And first, some very good news from MBIT. They were among 39 schools or districts across Pennsylvania to receive safety and security grant money. They received a little over $24,000, which will be used to buy protective window film and 25 additional surveillance cameras. We're pleased with that. The director reviewed enrollment numbers with us. There are about 900 students interested in attending next year. 10 of their programs are already at full capacity, and there will be a new program interest survey distributed to ninth graders, and the director will be reaching out to superintendents for their help in conducting that survey. We on the MBIT Council had requested a facility condition assessment to help us in our planning, similar to what we do in terms of capital planning. And the facility manager brought us back three different companies who made a bid for that, and we selected one, Bustamante Engineers, who are going to assist us in developing plans down the road to assist us with infrastructure components, building components, engineering equipment, so that we can see a bit more home range and try to coordinate building needs that could be done at the same time at a cost savings as opposed to on an as-needed basis. So with the assistance of that engineering company, we'll be looking at getting a real comprehensive assessment of what the needs are for the infrastructure at MBIT. An update on the roof, the sections of the roof that needed remediation, that's been completed, a warranty has been issued. I can only hope, as I see the weather now and last night, that, that the roof is holding. And the infamous lintel project. The facility manager gave us a very thorough and detailed walkthrough of the difficulties with the lintels. I thought often of Mr. Taylor during that presentation. He would have enjoyed it very much and understood it far better than I. A great deal of study has gone into what caused the problem with the lintels. Some immediate masonry and demolition work had to occur in April. That's been taken care of. And once again, a study has been, a study has been requested for what needs to happen long-term with those lintels, with the facade, to maintain structural integrity of the building. And approvals for that occurred at the Executive Council meeting. And then finally, on a really happy note, I was so pleased to attend an award ceremony on May 13th, and just want to give a quick shout-out to some of our Council Rock students who attend MBIT. The Skills USA District 2 competition, we had a number of winners from Council Rock, so I would just like to mention Daniel Dockerty from Council Rock South, Pierce Rosdick from Council Rock South, Riley Shukowski from South, Kylie Toth from Council Rock North, and Maloney McDonald from Council Rock South. And additionally, the Pennsylvania Regional Media and Design Competition, we had a number of winners, Daniel Bauer from Council Rock North, and taking both a second and a third place, when was Zachary Garrick from Council Rock North. So congratulations to our students.
Thank you, Ms. McKee. With that, we'll move to Mr. Tate, the Policy Committee.
Policy Committee met in April and discussed seven policies, which are recommended to the board for approval this evening. You like the motion now?
That, that's your section.
I move to approve the policies as contained in the agenda. You can read the titles of the policies if you wish.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Bylik.
Thank you. We had a bit of discussion on a couple of the policies. The first three are pretty basic, simple policies. The opening exercises and copyright material policies, we discussed a bit, and we had extensive conversation about acceptable use and breach of personal information, particularly discussing the security of personal information, and we recommend these policies for the board's approval.
Any questions? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent, and with that, we'll move to Dr. Thor with what looks to be the shortest facilities agenda we have had in the last four years.
The facilities meeting this month was canceled. We'll meet very briefly next week on June 6th. Very briefly. Doug, do you want to add anything? I know you've been receiving bids and whatnot. The only thing, no, he's got nothing. The only thing I will mention is, Doug might talk about maybe a visit to the newly renovated Rice Town Elementary in the coming weeks. Doug, I'm going to leave it to Doug for maybe Saturday, April, or Friday, but let's work it around. I don't want to be in your way when the movers start doing the work.
Can we maybe do it just in the summertime during the week so we don't have to pull Doug out on a Saturday?
That would be fine, too. That would be fine, too.
If we can figure out something that works that way, you don't need to be out on a Saturday.
Yep.
Especially over the summer.
Yep. So whatever works, Doug. We'll get everybody a chance to see, and then we'll just note that the plan's still delivered on time. So we were visioned out.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thorwart, and we'll now move to Mr. Bylik to take us to one of the longer finance committees.
Okay, so the finance committee met on May 9th. Ms. Brooks was the guest chair for the evening, as I was unavailable. It seems to be a round robin.
You got a T-shirt that fits around.
Guest chair. There was quite a bit on the agenda, including the, the final budget, which you're going to see this evening. I'm going to let Mr. Stone talk about some details.
We have a number of items on the consent agenda that were discussed in detail at the May 9th committee meeting, including approval of three bids and a couple of other items that were added subsequent to that committee meeting. Technologies Services Agreement for Legal Services and our agreement with ESS Northeast, which provides our professional substitutes. Just make sure I'm covering everything. Excuse me, we also have a Plan Con Part K approval, which simply is a formality around when we refinance bonds, and we did that back in April, so we want to continue the reimbursement on those debt service payments.
When you make that motion, Mark, it's be- When you make that motion, Mark, it's B through J.
I have that circled and.
Excellent.
So I appreciate that. And I don't know if it's appropriate to say this now, but I will. Mr. Stone and I met a few weeks ago and we talked about the new projection software that we have. And I want to thank PFM for allowing us to have access to that and reduce costs, significantly reduced costs. I'm surprised. I don't think we've, have we officially approved that already?
No, we, I informed the board to remember.
Yeah, we should. But it's going to give us some really great tools going forward with projections, financial projections. So I was excited by what I saw and I think you will be, too, when you see it. All right. So with that, I move to approve consent agenda items B through J as contained in this.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. Any other questions or comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent. And Mr. Bylick, if you could take L and M together, please.
K and L.
K and L, sorry.
Certainly. I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachment to this agenda. And I move to approve the personnel actions addendum as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. Any questions? Anything of note? Ms. Taylor? No objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note the motion is both passed with unanimous consent. With that, we move to letter N.
I move to approve the settlement agreement released as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Thorwart, again. Any questions or comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note that it passes with you, the motion passed with unanimous consent and we'll continue to move with letter N.
I recommend that we approve bid 19 through 16 of the BOIP telephones and network equipment, category five Chromebooks and category eight Cisco Catalyst 9500 Series switch to CDW government for a total not to exceed $309,869.1. Category nine ubiquity, did I say that right? Wireless access points to SHI International for a total not to exceed $47,614.56. Category 10 Fortive Voice PBX and telephones to Integra One for $95,490, subject to audit. I move that we reject category six iPad Pros as they can be purchased for a lesser price on the PEPM contract.
Your second. Second. Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. There's some pretty big numbers in there. I know it was gone over at the Finance Meeting. You want to give a three-second overview? Mr. Frederickson.
Actually, we didn't go over this at the Finance Committee meeting. This is just a normal bid we do in May for the summer equipment that we're going to need. This includes the computer refreshes, some of the computer equipment we need to support the rollout of Chromebooks at the high schools. We're placing some phone systems that have been due to be replaced for the last couple of years. The Chromebooks and the PCs will probably be on the June Board Agenda for approval for the summer replacement. We're still evaluating the equipment. We bring it in, we take it through a series of tests for three weeks, bring in several vendors, and then we pick the piece of equipment that works the best at the lowest price.
Thank you, Ms. Frederickson. Any questions? Comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent. We'll move to letter O, please.
Letter O. I move to approve a five-year contract with Chart Wells to provide food services. This contract includes a renewal option each year and a financial guarantee of $235,311 per year. The 2019-2020 student lunch prices as contained in the attachment to this agenda will remain the same. Elementary school lunch will be $2.85 and middle school lunch, $3.35.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Quick commentary there.
May I just clarify that this is technically a one-year contract with four individual one-year renewals? So it could be a five-year contract.
Perfect.
I have a question about that. Rob, do we have a 30-day out on that contract, just like we do any contract, or is it actually one year?
Mr. Bylick, that's a good question. I could not open this attachment prior to tonight's meeting and I'm looking at it now.
We need to amend the motion for solicitor review.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. Mr. Bylick, can you please send your motion?
I'll amend my motion to include subject to solicitor review.
Thank you.
We're going to move forward.
What's that?
We're going to move forward.
Oh, I was just waiting to see if you wanted an answer to that question.
No, I can wait.
Okay. All right. That question, any other questions or comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note that the motion passes with unanimous consent and we will move to the second to last item in the Finance Agenda.
Item P, I move to approve the establishment of an agency fund for the purposes of accounting for the transaction associated with district's IRS Section 125 Cafeteria Plan for medical independent care spending and authorize the Treasurer to immediately transfer $175,000 of initial funding to cover claims, costs, and advance of employee funding. Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
We don't need the second part of this paragraph, right? The second part?
Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah, the second.
That's what I thought. Okay. Any questions or comments? Any objections? Hearing none, I'd ask the Secretary to note the motion passes with unanimous consent and that will move to the big item of the night.
Can I jump in before you do that, Mr. Block? Mr. Bylick, the Chart Wells contract is terminable for cause or for convenience by either party on 60 days written notice.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cox. All right. Item Q, approval of the 2019-2020 final general budget, fund budget, excuse me. I move to approve the Council Rock School District final 2019-2020 general fund budget and tax resolution with a tax increase of 2.18%, equating to a 126.301 mils as contained in the attachments to this agenda and subject to final solicitor review.
Second.
Second for Ms. Brooks. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, there is a motion to approve the 2019-2020 final budget. And as Dr. Frazier mentioned and as the motion indicated, this budget includes a 2.18% real estate tax increase. So I'll go through some of the details of this budget. The revenue budget checks in at just under $242 million. The expenditure is $246.4 million. That results in a deficit of $4.4 million. Now, that's consistent with prior year's practice and that's right in the range of where prior budgets have been approved. So that's not an unusual practice here in Council Rock. I will point out that the use of fund balance in this particular budget includes approximately $389,000 of committed fund balance. And that committed fund balance will be used to fund the purchase of the K-5 math program that was just recently approved by the Board. We will, that number is very round on purpose because Dr. Elliott and I are still working through some details around shipping costs and final invoices. So that number, when you approve the final audit, will probably vary slightly. So the real estate tax impact of this budget, as you can see, our mileage rate will increase to 126.301 mils, 2.18% tax increase. That equates to an annual increase for the home assessed at the Council Rock median assessment, an annual increase of $104. On the right-hand side of that slide, you see the homestead/farmstead credit information. Recall that that money is, comes from the state through the gambling funds and is distributed to those homeowners who are, homeowners and landowners who are eligible for a homestead/farmstead. Essentially, if it is your primary residence, you are eligible for that credit. So the simple math is you take the total amount of money, divide it by the total number of properties, you get the credit amount, which comes up to $280.39, up slightly from last year, which was just under $273. It's a nice pie chart for you folks. It's our final budget summary. Shows the, shows two years, two prior years of actual, our 1819 budget and our 1920 recommended budget. I'll talk briefly on the revenue side, as we'll go into the expenditures in more detail shortly. Revenues are increasing $5.4 million, 2.22%. Most of that is in the real estate tax line item. It's about $4 million of an increase. The state revenue is increasing mostly because of reimbursements that the district receives on its FICA and social, excuse me, Social Security and Peasers contributions. Total expenditure is increasing 2.37%. It's about $5.7 million. So you can walk down that column there and see that difference of $4.4 million would come from the fund balance. And so there you see it as a pie chart. Local sources, pretty consistent with suburban school districts in this area. Three-quarters of our budget comes from local sources. So in addition to the real estate tax, transfer taxes, earned income tax, the occupation tax, interest earnings, things of that nature. State and federal sources total 22% and that use of fund balance will be about 2% of our total appropriations to get us into balance. This chart I presented at the Budget Forum, but I've now updated to include the 2019-2020 information. So the orange line is the Act One Index mandated by the state and it's a number that is not exceeded unless exceptions are utilized by the Board. And I'll point out, as I did at the Budget Forum, that this Board, over the last nine years, has approved budgets at or below the Act One Index and that will continue into 2019-20, as you can see on the far right there, with the 2.8% increase coming in just below the index of 2.3%. So here's the pie chart of our final expenditure budget. And similar to local revenue, our budget is primarily salaries and benefits. We're people organization. So I'm not surprised, it's not extraordinary to see three-quarters of the budget going towards that particular line item. I'll talk a little bit more about the Peasers impact, but of that 76%, 15% of that particular slice of the pie goes to Peasers contributions. The debt service comes in at 8%. That's a manageable debt load when we look at the best practices recommended by professional organizations and what the rating agencies will look for. It's typically in that, in that 10% ballpark that I like to see. So that is a manageable debt load. The 300 to 900 objects is everything else. All the supplies, equipment, professional services, transportation costs, utilities, repairs and maintenance, things like that. That comes in at about 16% of our budget. So this particular table shows a more detailed breakdown of the salaries, benefits, and then the 300 to 900 objects totaling the final expenditure recommendation of $246.4 million. So that top-line item, total salaries, comes in at $115.6 million. That's a growth of about $3.6 million year over year. And there's an increase of 9.87 FTEs. That number is increased by two since the proposed final budget. And as you, as you all well know, that was due to the inclusion of the two elementary tech specialists that were discussed at the May 9th Finance Committee meeting. I'd also point out that the reason that we are able to come in at a 2.18% is because we've carefully reviewed our elementary enrollment. The 9.87 includes two additional elementary teachers, which were put in as placeholders in the event that sections were needed to maintain the appropriate class sizes. As we've reviewed that information, we do not believe that we will need 1.5 of those positions, meaning we will use a half of the two that we had budgeted for. So that, although we are not decreasing the expenditures, we decrease the revenue. So we won't spend that money and the revenue will, the decrease in revenue offsets the non-decrease of expenditures. As you can see in the benefits, the two major changes were essentially offsetting our healthcare costs. Our healthcare experience has been very good and we're projecting that it will continue into next year. So the healthcare costs are actually projected to decline by just under $1.1 million. And that's a, that's a good position to be in. And it is fortunately helping to offset the contributions to the Peasers system, coming in about two-thirds of the way down that middle section there of about $1.4 million. So with that offset, our total employee benefits are increasing about $806,000 for this year. I'll get into more detail on the 300 to 900 objects and show you some of the increases in that area, but that totals $1.3 million increase. But before I do that, again, this was another slide that I presented at the Budget Forum, showing the rather steep ascent that Pennsylvania school districts and IU's have seen with respect to contributions to the pension system. So beginning in 2003-4, that contribution rate was 3.77%. Maintained at around that level for almost 10 years, but then you can see in 2011-12, it began a dramatic climb, growing by four percentage points a year up until about 2017-18, and it started to flatten out again. So I also wanted to point out, I ran a calculation based on our current salaries and if we, if the school district had to contribute at the 3.77% rate that existed in 2003-4, our budget would be less by $34.4 million. So that's primarily rate-driven, that increase. So it's substantial. So here are the other major expenditure changes that fall outside of the salary and benefit realm. Our contracted substitute line item is increasing. This is a good problem we're having. We've, we've talked about this at some Finance Committee meetings. We're now filling 90% of our substitute positions, which is good for education, but it does mean that we are paying more to provide those services. But a worthy expenditure, without question. The next two line items are both contractual rate increases for our custodial contract and for our transportation contract. The 538 communications line item, we have some phone upgrades budgeted for next year, which are important as we, as some of our systems grow a little older. I'll point out that there's almost an offset between the 610 supply account and the 640 book account. So we've talked about the K-5 math program, so that's why you see an increase in the book account. But it was not purely an increase across the entire budget. There were reductions in other areas within the curriculum budget, within some of the building budgets to help fit that into a, to a more reasonable increase. Educational software, we have some increases in that account. And our equipment, I point out, just because we've talked a lot about our, the increasing number of Chromebooks that we are putting into the schools and note that, again, in the spirit of trying to fit everything into a smaller box, that line item, despite increasing the number of Chromebooks by 900, 1800? Don't remember the number exactly. Either way, a good number, the expenditure line item for that is only increasing $78,000. So we are almost finished, folks. This is our last official action for the Board in the 1920 budget timeline. So it's our recommendation that the Board approve the recommended budget and tax rate as presented. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Stone, and congratulations to you on your first budget cycle. Congratulations to the entire team. I know a lot of, a lot of work went into that and I appreciate that. Mr. Bylick, you're the Finance Chair. You have any comments? If you'd like to make your questions.
Sure. I'll be first. First of all, I do want to recognize the work that Bill has done, along with the rest of the administration and Mr. Reinhardt. So Bob Reinhardt retired. As I said before, he did the Irish goodbye of retirements, where he just left. But he did a great job in preparation before he left. He made sure that this district was in the best shape it could be and that he prepared Bill the best he could before he stepped away. And we want to thank Mr. Reinhardt for that because we wouldn't be here ahead of the death. we want to thank Mr. Reinhardt for that because we wouldn't be here ahead of the deadline without his work. So six years ago, when I first got on this board and looked at my first budget, I did not vote for it, nor did I vote for a budget increase for the subsequent three or four years. And my concern always was is that, first of all, there's what I thought was a lack of information. If you knew board members, you've heard me say this over and over again, but you can't imagine that we would approve a budget with only one year, with only a one-year look. And Mr. Block and I, I think Denise was behind it, we pushed really, really hard for five-year projections. And we have those now. And Bob put them together very, very well with some different looks at worst-case scenarios, best-case scenarios. And from what I see, Bill's going to improve on that greatly. That gives us the opportunity to make better decisions for the long-term health of this district and for the programs that we provide our kids and the, the benefits and pay that we can provide our staff and working environment. And we have a lot to pay for. We have a lot of buildings that we've done. We have a lot of programs. And with that, I have a lot of concerns. I've said every year that I won't vote for a budget increase. Is that not absolutely necessary? And I'm here to tell you that I will be voting for this budget increase tonight because it is not only absolutely necessary, I'm afraid it may not be enough. We are long due for a recession, long due for recession. And the five-year projections and when we push it out longer than that, as I said before, at our last meeting, when we were approving some projects, if everything goes perfectly, I am concerned for the future financial health of this district. And I'm concerned that in 10 years, we may be faced with some very, very difficult choices that include program cuts. That said, we're doing the best we can. We have limits of what we can increase taxes by. And I think we should approve this budget tonight. But I think it's very, very important that we continue to challenge the administration to do better. I do believe that the administration has done all they could do with this budget. I am not saying that they haven't. But I think it's our job as elected officials to make sure that we're constantly challenging the administration, constantly challenging all employees to do what they can with the, it sounds funny to say limited resources when you're talking about $246 million, right? But they really are limited resources for the size of the district and the cost of things that we have to do and all the facilities we have to maintain. And I'm just shocked to see a zero and no discussion of facility improvements for one, at one meeting. But the, this is what concerns me. We talked about block scheduling in the last academic standards meeting, which sounds wonderful. And I wonder how we're going to pay for it. There's things like this. So great job on the budget. I think we all must approve that, the budget increase tonight. I think we have to be very, very hawkish going forward of every item. It seems like every new pencil we have to pay for has to be, you know, weeded out. And do we really need that pencil? Or can we do with a half a pencil? I don't know, right? These questions. But I do think Dr. Frazer and the staff are looking at these things very, very closely. So I'm going to get off my soapbox and say, nice job. Let's please approve this budget and let's keep a close eye.
Thank you, Mr. Barlick. And I'm going to take the opportunity to comment as the other half of leadership here. I had a lot of comments to make here, and I think you said that so well. I'm only going to make one. The one thing I'd add is that it would have been really easy to go to the max of 2.3. The fact that we haven't really demonstrates the level of detail that Dr. Frazer, Mr. Stone went through with the entire team to scrutinize that this budget, combined with our long-term plans for operations and now financial overlays, that gives me the confidence that this is what we need to do. So along with Mark, I'll be supporting this and I would be encouraging all of our peers to do the same. So with that, I'll open it up to other comments or questions. Mr. Adago?
I'll just make it quick and simple. Mark, thank you for your perspective for the long-term financial prospects or outlook for what we we face. So we're going to have to make some, you know, very good choices moving forward. There's going to be some tough decisions to make. And, you know, we can get through it. We will get through it. But I will be approving the budget for today because it is 100% necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Adago. Ms. Brooks?
Mark, thank you for your very detailed commentary. Because a lot of what I've been thinking is aligned to what you have said. You know, this budget is tricky because it's a huge number. There's not a whole lot of discretionary area because so much is contractually obligated. And, you know, it's, you know, we're balancing a lot of competing priorities. We want the district to be a highly performing district for our students, the needs that they have to be successful in the world they're entering, the ever-changing issues of technology and and the jobs and the kinds of things that we have to do to prepare them. We have to invest in that. We have to invest in our buildings. We have to make sure that, you know, they, they're comfortable and safe and dry. And, and so, you know, if only, as the slide Mr. Stone pointed out, you know, the state didn't mandate certain things for us that we have no control over, it would be different. It's not exactly the same as how we run the budgets in our homes, because we can make choices and sacrifice in one area to make up for something else or take risks because it's just us. But when we're taking care of, you know, 11,000 students, 1,000 staff members, I mean, this, this is a serious thing. And so, you know, it's not something that anybody takes lightly to raise someone's taxes. But I do think that the work has been so thoughtful and so thorough and so transparent and so responsive to questions and needs and making the investments that we need, that I have no hesitation to know that we're doing a good thing for our community to move forward with what's proposed.
Mr. Tate?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Block. Very quickly, Mr. Stone, thank you for your good work on this and presenting us with a lot of very clear and understandable information. And I've been meaning for some time to talk about what Ms. Barlick has done in terms of our earnings on investment and how much improved that picture is. So I looked up on the proposed budget, we're counting on 1.75 million in earnings on investments in the next school year. And that's a lot of money. And our previous budgets had a much more modest line for earnings on investments. But, you know, Mr. Barlick pushed us to be more strategic in how we manage our cash reserves. And, you know, we're doing a lot better. And that 1.75 million is really something to be proud of. So I commend you for that. I think that's a real step forward, Mark. There was an interesting line graph that Mr. Stone showed us that showed our recent tax increase history. And that's something I've talked about before. In 2011, 2012, the tax increase was zero. The following year, it was 1.7%. The next year, it was 1.3, then it was 0.6. And in 2015, 16, it was 0.25%. Now, one could say, that's terrific. My point of view is the opposite. That dug us into a hole. And I think we're still digging out of that hole. If we had been over those seven years rated about a 1.5% tax increase or something like that, we wouldn't be in the tight fiscal situation we are today. So I feel like we've dug our way out of the hole. We've made investments into facilities that really were overdue. And I think we're managing our funds very effectively. 2.18% is a reasonable tax increase, I think. Not much more than the rate of inflation, perhaps less. And best of all is we have a long-range financial plan and we have a long-range capital plan, and they're integrated. So we know where we're going. We know we've got tight budgets ahead. I think Mark is absolutely right to be concerned about what our financial future looks like. We're managing it as well as possible. We're managing our capital facilities as well as possible. And I feel confident that no, oh, I don't want to say that. No stone has been left unturned. Sorry. Sorry. I didn't plan to say that. You know, this is a really good budget and it's a modest budget and it's a tight budget. And, oh, one last thing. You know, the board pushed to restore or keep the two ed tech specialists at the elementary level. And the administration found a way to fund those two positions. And I think that's a great thing. And I think this is a real good budget. And I enthusiastically support it.
Can I just ask a question? And maybe I'm wrong. So if I'm wrong, just tell me. But the plan for technology was also always to go elementary, middle, high school. And what we've done is we've gone elementary, elementary, middle, elementary, middle, high school. So what we've done is we've funded more of the plan than originally. So I think that's important to call out. It wasn't like we kept two. We've actually got four more than the plan called for at this point today. So, you know, while I really sympathize with the Chromebook ask, and we've got to find a way to get there, the progress that we've been able to make is we focused on investments and set money aside. Fund balance has been really, really good. So great point, Mr. Tate. It's big. Dr. Thorwart?
I'll reiterate what you said earlier. It would have been really easy just to say 2.3 and go. So I do appreciate, you know, the hard look at the last minute to back off a little bit. And to second what Mr. Tate said, I'm very grateful we kept those tech specialists. I've seen them all in action. And it's one of those things in the budget that's worth it. So I'm glad it's there.
Okay, two seconds. Yeah, Mr. Tate stole my thunder. As we talked about on the sidebar, about the elementary teachers that are staying on board too. That's okay. You're the alter statesman. I, you know, we talked about it at length, you know, our colleagues, you know, about keeping them on board. And we see it at the elementary level when we roll out these Chromebooks into the, into these young children and how, how quick they jump on it. Losing those two, those two spots, in my opinion, if we could afford it, was foolish. But with that being said, I mean, you know, Bill, I go through this budget. I hope that in light of the redistricting coming this fall, that are, there are schools that are seeing increases, students are getting the necessary budget needs. Some of these numbers are kind of consistent. Some of our schools are seeing more kids. So with that being said, I, this is where I want to throw, you know, an attaboy to our PTOs out there. Without them and CREF, without those buy-ins from those, those team players that work hours, they're there selling pretzels at 8 o'clock in the morning, they're closing the school 10 o'clock the night after an event. Without that extra money coming in for our PTOs, where would we be? And I said it during my interview when I was appointed to the board, you know, being, being very frugal, you're looking at probably a half million dollars that comes in at the elementary level through the PTOs. So this is, you know, a time where our counterparts out there and my counterparts in the PTOs, you know, we put our heads together and find out ways to, to, to close the gaps where this budget or future budgets may not work to the degree that we were used to. So again, I, you know, the work that gets done beyond the scope of, you know, the numbers in front of us tonight, our team partners out there, they deserve a big plug tonight too. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. Before I call for the roll call, just one more, one more comment that is consistent with the, the discussion around not going to the Act One Index. I think you've got a board that sits at this table tonight that is willing to invest in this community as long as it can be justified to the entire taxpayer base. And we need to continue with the scrutiny that you've done this year. And we can't look at the Act One Index as something that's there and manage our business in a way that says the Act One Index is a minimum increase for anything. So I appreciate that you guys did that. And I look forward to another great cycle that will take a little while to get into. And with no further comment, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Denise Brooks?
Yes.
Baron Hattie?
Yes.
Ed Solomon?
Yes.
Andy Blatt?
Yes.
Mark Viner?
Yes.
Ed Tate?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Permission one? No, Kristen's there though. Over there. All right. So with that, we will move to our second round of public comment. There is an audience this late, which is great. Is there any second round of public comment? Okay. Is there any old business? Mr. Barlick?
If I can mention on the heels of this budget discussion, as a reminder, we are putting together a financial advisory board to help with budgetary issues and how to look at things differently throughout the district and different resources. And we've received some applications, but we'd like more. So there's been some discussion about pushing that deadline. I hope that's okay for me to mention. And I think we should. I think we should give it maybe another 30 days if that doesn't interfere with the, the planning cycle and the education cycle of this committee. Now, I'll say, this is what I, my dream team would be. I want CEOs that have run $250 million budgets before. I'd love to see not-for-profit directors who have dealt with limited funding before and creative ways to do it. I really appreciate the folks that have served on many committees that, and this is without me seeing a single resume, by the way, so I'm not speaking to anyone specifically. I appreciate anybody that served on other committees in the district that always get involved, but we're really looking for different ideas. So I, if you, if you know of anybody, and I understand that this message is very limited. So we're hopeful that when Ms. O'Grady gets back, we're going to do some significant advertising on this. But this is, this could be a vital, vital advisory committee to our district, and it could show us different ways of doing things. Mr. Tate very graciously gave me some credit for an idea that I had brought to the board about just bringing in an investment consultant to help us look at ways to make more money for the district. And that has been very, very beneficial. And I only say that because that was very different than what we had been doing in the past. And there was discussion, well, and this will be in my next discussion, I, we've always done it this way. So we don't, we're not going to do it any differently. And all the other 12 other districts do it this way. We need to stop that kind of thinking and we need different ideas to come on. So please, if you could think of anybody, if anybody comes to mind and say, he or she would be a great addition to this, let's have him or her apply for this committee. We need the help.
Could I piggyback on that and say that maybe we should actively seek people, like even to go out, some kind of letter or notification to corporations of people who might have ideas? I mean, Princeton's pretty close. There's a lot of big heads there. And I'm sure in this area, I think we could probably actively search for people too and ask them if they'd be interested. And they might know somebody who knows somebody.
I've actually emailed a couple of people and their natural, you know, concern is, is the time commitment. So maybe you could speak to that.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, because this is a new thing.
Yeah, it's, so I don't know. What are the thoughts around the time commitment? Bill, have you thought about this? Because I know you've thought about your time involved.
I would, I would say that the time involved would be fairly significant, meaning one or two times a month for the first several months, because there is a lot of educating that needs to happen, as you all know, as board members. School district finance is not, is not very similar to private sector, public sector financing. So I would then view as the budget process begins to unfold, that that time would diminish a bit as we, as the administration will need to tend to our duties to prepare the budget. But then that we would be able to pick back up again the following summer with the group. And they've now seen us go through a budget process. They'll have seen a full cycle and they can give some insights again in that following summer. So it's sort of a little ebb and flow, but we're, we're not expecting an every week commitment. And, you know, maybe the at most three, three times a month in the, in the busiest month.
Great, thanks. And I think that we'd have to insist, and I think this administration is very open to it, to hold meetings like it's 2019, and that is Zoom type of meetings or WebEx type of meetings. So we're not expecting someone who works in Manhattan, who runs a big corporation, to have to get down in his car or his or her car and come to the Chancellor Center, which will shorten that commitment for folks. And I think we have to be open to that because they, we all know, we do it all day. These meetings can be just as efficient if we're videoing or just conversing over the phone. You have an issue?
What?
You have an item?
Not at all? Good? Good, okay. Excellent. Mr. Cox brought to my attention that we, in our haste to get to the budget skipped over letter P. So I'm just going to go ahead and make that quick motion. I move to approve.
Mark?
Oh, we did get it? Okay, I thought we said no.
Oh.
It was passed with unanimous consent. Yeah, that's, so you didn't, you didn't know that?
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we did go through that.
That's my, that's my fault.
That's okay.
I was just, because I was trying to answer Mr. Brown's question about.
Yeah, I thought we had done it. Okay, so that passed with unanimous consent.
And Mr. Stone and I spent so much time with, on that item this week, I was leaning into it, so.
All right, so let's show that pass with unanimous consent.
I pass.
Is there any new business from the board?
I've got one. Quick, quick. I got one. And, and Robert and I talked about it. Yesterday, we had tornado warning for the first time probably in a very long time. I would just like to suggest that the administrative team, I'm up in the playbook. We did it well. This is not a bash on, on anything we did, we did it as well as we could, but since we do it so infrequently, it might be nice to have a script somewhere in our back pocket, you know, for this and any other kind of foreseeable. A playbook would be nice. I would just like to suggest that moving forward.
Anything else?
This is regarding the transition for redistricting next year and we had a, I experienced a, you know, a welcoming night last week. And as I was walking into the Churchville Elementary School and Mr. Senko was coming out and he said he'd been at a few other schools already that day, what struck me is awesome and that I wanted to mention tonight is shout out the, all the teachers that were standing outside of their doors of their classroom welcoming these kids at 6:30 to 7:30 at night. So I applaud Mr. Senko and, and the administration and all the teachers and staff who, who are doing that outside of their regular hours. Just wanted to say thank you.
Anything else?
I have a general board comment and it'll be very, very quick if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So I just want to congratulate the three board members who are retaining their seats from the election. So that's Ed Solomon, Mike.
Dr. Thorwart.
And Kristen Marcel. And, and I'm sorry, you too, Ed, Tate, I apologize. And I just wanted to say, and I think Andy and Denise may back me up on this, this is a much different board and it's no disrespect to the board members who were here before, but this is a much different board than the board, the board we stepped into. But there was a lot of arguing and fighting at board meetings and it was much more difficult. And I want to thank everybody for your graciousness and open-mindedness. And I'm very, very happy to see that those folks are going to continue because I do like the way this board operates. It doesn't mean that we all agree on everything all the time, but we do all focus on getting the job done and doing the right thing for the district, the students and the taxpayers as a whole.
Thanks, Mark. Anything else? I just want to make one quick comment, mention the passing of UMT tax collector Nicholas J. Aitor last week, so our thoughts are with his family. Mr. Stone is working with the township to ensure that we don't miss a beat, especially this time of year. So sad news that we're all, we're all thinking about. With that, meeting is adjourned. We will see you in June.